I'm gonna start the meeting. Welcome to the Public Safety Committee meeting. Today's May 6th, it's 7:00 PM. We're doing this meeting through Zoom. Because the order of the governor, he allows to do so. So we are gonna start the meeting. We have Consul Derby here, we have Consul Rothschild. We don't have minutes to approve. So that's okay, we can do, we can do later, later on, on next meeting. Is anyone here, we have a public speak time now, is anyone here that wanna say something that is not related to the, to the report? If there's anyone here that is, wanna say something that is not related to the report, this is time to talk. Myra? You're muted.
I'm not working with my mouse. All right, good evening. I just wanted to make some general public comment. Firstly, I wanted to thank the public, or rather, Community Safety Committee for hosting this community conversation and as well as giving the community, the whole community, the opportunity to have a platform and a space that we've been invited to, to reimagine systems of safety and make comments about the recommendations of this report. And the other things I would like to offer are that, as any professional or any professional organization, we all have opportunities to review and provide critique. And that critique, questioning, imagining, they're all part of development, growth and improvement. So just in our own personal lives and our own personal professions, we have opportunities for critique and reimagining, re-envisioning for the purposes of growth. And I like to offer that this process and the recommendations in the report that we're undertaking as a community that's being hosted by this committee is not a process of hate, it's not a process of a division, but rather, I'd like for us in, within this meeting and with my fellow neighbors to see this as an opportunity for growth and community building. And that's it, thank you for undertaking this.
Thank you, Myra, I appreciate those words. Caroline?
Hello, Carolyn Cushing, Main Street District or Salem. Yeah, so I was at the last meeting and I went away with some thoughts that are kind of overarching as opposed to just directly related to the recommendations. And I was thinking, you know, we're in this process, we're being invited by the report examination as having us reexamine safety and how we want it to be in East Hampton. And it had me thinking about we, just the bigger picture of how much so many of us, different groups are being asked to change because of the pandemic. So many people have had to change, teachers have had to reorient multiple times about how they teach. And restaurants are, you know, people have lost their jobs, then their restaurants are trying to figure out how to stay alive. So lots of change happening. I work in a nonprofit that related to the pandemic totally reorganized. People had different lines of reporting, different tasks. There were, it, you know, it could be stressful time. So just this time is having us change. And one thing that we, not directly related to the pandemic, but highlighted is, you know, the issues of racial justice that we are looking at as a country. And I was, had the radio on and once again, I was hearing that statement, you know, black and brown people are more affected, you know, like we hear this over and over again and it's studies and factual and, you know, I'm just like, how long are we gonna listen to this? Like, it's just unacceptable, we have to address it, which will require changing systems. And I also wanna acknowledge that that is stressful when you're in a system that has to change. And are we examining of safety could, in East Hampton could mean changes in the structure or staffing or functions of the police department? Because in my workplace, I'm going through that same times of uncertainty and things changing. I, 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 I kind of, maybe I have some empathy, maybe I understand that this can be stressful and difficult. But that, like my institution is growing in a positive way. Myra was talking about this is part of growth. And in those, in these times, people are stressed out, like we get a little crazy, our jobs are changing or whatever for, in my case, you know, it's really important to have good leadership. I'm lucky that where I work, there is leadership upset, you know, pointing toward, yes, we need to make this change. This is where we're gonna go, this is how we're gonna get there. And sometimes like, we don't know yet, but we're gonna work and you need to move along and move toward this change, which is what's required by the times we live in. So just kind of wanting to name that bigger picture and saying that it is, it can be stressful. And I hope it can end up in a positive place for us in East Hampton and us working through this report and all the listening that's happening in the committee. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Caroline. So, I didn't see anyone else wanna make a comment before we start discussing the recommendation two and three. I just wanna, just give you a brief update, the last meeting, we start talking about recommendation number one, investing in community-led non-police response to health and safety concerns. And I just wanna remind everybody that we, the three counselors from this committee, basically, we are listening the community, we're gonna let people to be, gonna let the people to talk in this, in this meeting. Again, I'm gonna remind everybody, this is not a public hearing, but I'm gonna be flexible to let people to talk about the recommendation. We're taking notes, me and the other two counselors, we're taking notes. We're gonna keep listening to community, we're gonna keep listening to other counselors if they have something to say, we're gonna keep listening to the police department, if they have any comment to, about this recommendation. We're gonna keep moving on this, this work. I'm gonna ask to everybody to please be respectful. If you're gonna talk, to talk to the committee. This, this report is to the city counselors and to the mayor, basically it's to the mayor, the mayor send it to the Public Safety and we're gonna review it and we're gonna send another recommendation, a report to, to the mayor about our discussions here in this committee. So I'm gonna now let Isoni Cole Hendrick, I know she is on the call. And because she was the person who was basically moderating this, this group, the Mayor's Pledge Group. I'm gonna let her to talk about the recommendation two and three, if she wanted to do so, I know she's around here.
Hi, Omar, hi, how are you? Hello, folks, thank you for having me. So Omar, you would like me just to introduce these two recommendations?
Yes, please.
Okay. So it's nice to see folks this evening, these two recommendations, the first one focuses on data collection, analysis and regular reporting. Just as a sort of broad overview of this recommendation, I would kind of liken it to the measurement that has to occur in many parts of our lives. So one way to kind of think about the need for better measurement and data is to imagine, you know, a world where we have no gas gauge and we drive around and we just kind of have to guess, you know, when is our gas gonna run out and when do we need to fill up again? Or, you know, our, our kids are in school and, and they come home and the teacher sort of just calls and says, I think they've done pretty well, I'd say they're all right, but you don't have a good sense of, you know, some of their strengths and maybe the areas of opportunity where they need to develop stronger reading skills. Policing is really no different. And we have to have strong, robust mechanisms for collecting data on all sorts of policing practices. And that means stops, that means anytime police are engaging with citizens. And so, you know, in this case, we found through, through the work that we did for the Mayor's Pledge that examining this data was a challenge. And as you can see, you know, on that summary of the first page of this recommendation, we found that current data collection and analysis are inadequate. And the department really lacks capacity when it comes to both the infrastructure, the personnel and an agency culture around sort of robust data collection. So, you know, there is information on initiatives and important commitments to, to community challenges. But this group, the Mayor's Pledge Group, really recommends that there be a sort of deeper dive into looking at data, especially dissecting it and disaggregating it by race and ethnicity. And the more detailed recommendations in this section speak to developing a more formal culture of, of data collection and analysis. And it's one thing to collect data, but I think the, the really critical step is then engaging with your community stakeholders, with members of the East Hampton, East Hampton community around what that data might be telling us. So it can't just really exist within the police department. It has to be part of an ongoing exchange with community residents. And so, you know, it's, it's an internal tool, but it has to also be sort of an external part of greater accountability and transparency. We recommend examining ways of using a civilian data analyst to be able to dive deeper, to build that capacity. Another recommendation was to obviously, collect demographic data on all calls for any kind of service or officer-initiated contacts. And then making that data really publicly available and presenting it in whatever format this group and this community finds to be appropriate. And we made some recommendations that possibly the Community Relations Committee could be a source or a site of this regular reporting. And these, these recommendations really speak to needing to engage more stakeholders around defining what this community would like to understand and know about police practices. So regular conversations about uses of force, traffic stops, I would say, is going to probably be an important conversation. And just to briefly kind of touch on the last piece of this recommendation, and that's a deeper and, and more long-term examination of racial and ethnic disproportionality in arrests and citations. So the very limited data that we were able to look at, which, you know, we can sort of talk a little bit about why that is. We did see disproportionality in, in arrests and citations. More black residents or more black drivers were cited, and there's some caveats to that, and I can speak to that maybe later. And it's in the report. And a larger proportion of people who identify as black were arrested in comparison to the East Hampton population. And there were similar patterns when it comes to, in this case, it's identified as Hispanic but Latinx members potentially of, of the community. We don't know if these are all community members, you know, residents of East Hampton. But there's a, that deserves greater attention. So that's the first one, would you like me to stop there and, and then you can maybe talk a little bit about that?
Just, is any of the counselors have any questions to Nicole? Lindsay?
No, I'm just playing, just listening, thank you.
And I know we have, at least, I think I see two other counselors, I just wanna ask them if, if they wanna be part of the conversation now, or they wanna, if they have any questions to Nicole. I see Consul Sarret and I see Consul Peak. Yeah, Consul Sarret, you wanna say, you wanna ask something?
I just wanna make a general statement really quickly, just based on my review of the data as well as historical data based on previous studies that have been done in, on a broader scale in Massachusetts, as well as some peer-reviewed data around these types of issues that I, I don't think it's fair in terms of how this, the data that's presented here to represent that to the public necessarily, that there is a disproportionality, at least in the data that's actually represented this report. There is a disproportionality to the, the demographic information that we have available for East Hampton. But as more broad data was not presented, I don't feel, and I'll expand on this more when this comes to the full council, I don't feel that it's fair or representative of what we have available in front of us to make such a broad statement. And I think that really colors the conversation. I think this is an important discussion to have, but I think that using really powerful words like that based on the information we have and lack of appropriate data sets to be able to make that statement is really troubling to me, that's all.
Thank you. I, yeah, I'm gonna let you go, Nicole, but first I have to set the, the information, the recommendation that we have at the report. And information that we have from the, at the report is the data that we got from the police department. So, and that's why, and Nicole probably can talk a little bit more about this. But that's why the, the committee, the group make this recommendation to get more data and get and get more analysis about that data that we can get. If you wanna add something, Nicole?
Sure, thank you for your comment, Counselors Errett. I just wanna clarify a quick thing and when you say language that's being used, are you speaking to the word disproportionality? Just to, just to clarify.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so when I say disproportionality, I think that, and when you're referring to other peer-reviewed studies, you're probably talking about differences between the driving population and the resident population. And that there are many ways of measuring this. And we didn't say anything that this was sort of causal, because we can't say that. We clearly sort of state in the report that there aren't a lot of inferences that we can draw, but there is a difference in those two things, and that is why we use the word disproportionality. Not discrimination, we can't make that link because we don't know. So part of what I think this group was very careful to say was that this, there's a difference and it's worth examining. And without, as you've, as you noted, without longer-term data, right, and a larger data set to work with, it is very hard to, to come to any kind of conclusions. And that's sort of the opportunity that exists here is to dig deeper, to be able to get that information and then do the kind of analysis that I think you're speaking to. But that requires, you know, defining, you know, what the variables are that we need to, to look at. So I, just to kind of clarify things, I hope that clarifies it a bit.
I think that answer makes me feel a lot better, Professor Hendricks, and I, I definitely agree with that approach and sentiment.
Thank you, Nicole. Any of the, I know Tom Peak turned on his camera, I know the chief is raising his hand, but I just wanna go first to Consul Peak, because I know he turned on his camera, I just wanna know if he wanna ask or say something.
No, Counselor Gomez, I was just thanking you for the opportunity and saying that I'm primarily here to listen and probably have to jump off shortly, but I wanted to at least just listen while I could.
Sure, thank you. Chief?
Good evening, Counselors. I just wanna, for further clarification, the data that we provided was the data from the police department. So the comparison of the data in city residents and around race, we didn't provide that. But to clarify the disproportionality, you make any assumption that we only stop city residents and we only arrest city residents. Professor Hendrick said that it's hard to come to any real conclusions, but then she says it's disproportionate. So I'm confused as to, it can't be both ways, if it's, if you can't draw any conclusions, how could it be disproportionate? In the disproportionality, we talked about this at length when we're providing the data, that it's making the assumption that we're only stopping and arresting city residents. So if you wanted, I would suggest to this group, as we move forward with more data collection, that at a minimal, we take race data from our neighboring towns to come up with an accurate average of potential commuters. I think doing all of Western Mass would be a misnomer, but I think maybe if you do our, our neighbors and, and do an average of, of that sect, then I think it would not be as disproportionate as being, as being presented here. Let's see. Yeah, and we can talk about the data collection and the challenges that we have with that with our system, with our current system as we move forward, but I just wanted to draw attention to that.
May I just say one last thing?
Please do.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I, I think that this is precisely the very kind of conversation, you know, when I spoke about creating opportunities for talking about the data, it's really getting into the weeds like this and thinking about the different methodologies that we would use to look at this question. That is really the opportunity here. There are methodologies, you know, to use a benchmark. These kinds of studies can be very costly and expensive. So often, you know, researchers have to use, you know, maybe a, a benchmark that isn't ideal. We are starting from very little information and we're just trying to get a sense of some of the existing data. But if we were to move forward, you know, there are studies that use actually nighttime driving to kind of control for other factors. And, and there are lots of different methodologies that researchers explore to look at citations, traffic stops and racial, you know, disproportionality and ethnic disproportionality in these encounters. But I think, you know, this is where this conversation could go is, you know, if East Hampton feels that that's something you want to examine, there are methodologies that, that might, you know, satisfy some of these concerns.
Again, I'm gonna ask the Consul first if they wanna make a comment, if no, I'm gonna open to the public about this recommendation. Consul Rothschild?
I just, I just, I mean, Professor Hendricks just said, resonate with me is that when we see things in the data, I think it's fair to say, this creates a question for me, and I wanna learn more about this. And I would hope that everybody, whether or not you're in the police department or resident, when you see a number like the, the number that's disproportionate to the residents here, you know, that we can safely say this is something I wanna learn more about without a level of defensiveness happening, without people being worried that they're being called raises, that they're biased, just like, oh, this is, this is what data does for us, it creates questions and opportunities to explore more. So I would hope that that's what these questions, that this data is doing for us, is finding places where we have more questions that we'd like to explore. Thank you.
Thank you, Rothschild, I think that was, that was fair to say. Consular Sarret?
Yeah, and I wanna say globally that, you know, I would echo my colleague's statement that this is an important conversation to have. We see what's going on nationally and what is happening in some other communities, and we wanna examine, is that an issue here or is it not? And, you know, to my point earlier, I just wanted to be careful, because I think some people could see some of the verbiage used in the report and, and misinterpret it. And I appreciate that the professor clarified that. She cited, you know, veil of darkness studies that have been done. And, you know, I think the, the chief spoke to, we need to look at the population, the actual driving population, as well as neighboring towns. There's some other studies, such as one that was done by Northeastern University in 2004, that actually cast relatively positive light on our, on our community. And look, you know, globally, the goal is, is there bias and is there racism in our community? And we do need to examine this, but I just wanna make sure that we come at it from, we don't come at it from a position of bias and that we are having a conversation, not looking to create dominance or anything like that, or point fingers, that we're in this together as community and collaborative body. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Derby, no? Keep listening? Good. All right. I wish, can people, instead of have just one letter, can please change to the full name? For just for the minutes, we have your full name. I'm gonna let you W, and can you please just say your name?
Oh yeah, sorry, Wes Hardy, 154 Hendrick Street. Sorry. It's the big W, like the
Yes.
Sorry, so I just had a question, cuz I just, and like the chief sort of asked this and the professor was talking about this and I just, I'm just trying to understand. And maybe I'm coming late to the party here, but the, the, the disproportionality, like, and Counsel Rothschild said it as well, I'm just trying to understand. What is the disparity or the disproportionality that is being cited? I'm, I'm just trying to, because people are saying the data set, I, I wanna try to understand is the data set that's being used that people are saying is disproportionate? It's, we're talking about citations and arrests versus the population of the city as it is now? Or, or we're talking about historical arrests and citations versus the historical population of the city? Or I just, I'm trying to understand and maybe if someone smarter than me could, could explain about that, cuz if, and, and it seemed like before it, it was, and maybe I'm just having trouble understanding, it's been a long day, I've been up since five, but people are saying that there's, there's conclusions shouldn't or couldn't be drawn from the data, cuz it was an imperfect data set. But then simultaneously, the, it's disproportionate. So I don't, if, if a conclusion can't be drawn, I don't understand how you could come to a conclusion that it's disproportionate, I just, I don't understand what do we need more data or different data, or is the data not aligned appropriately? I just, if someone could explain, anyone really could explain, that would help.
Yeah, okay, first, Nicole, just give me one second. Just to try to explain to everybody the, the dynamic that what we're gonna do here. I'm gonna let Nicole Hendrick to answer some of the questions, because like I said before, she was basically the person who was running the group. And basically, she wrote most of the report with the input of the other, of the other members. And that's why I'm gonna let her to be part of this conversation, like answering some of the questions. I just wanna be clear with everybody before we keep going. I just wanna be clear with everybody before we keep going. Uh, Nicole?
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Um, that's a great question. So it's actually on pages ninety-four and ninety-five of the report. Um, and it, and I just wanna emphasize, it's a very limited snapshot. It was the data that we had, um, that was disaggregated by race and ethnicity. And it is about citations and arrests, and that was really the only data that we had, and it's for a very short period of time. So, you know, bracket that, it is a, uh, not enough data. So your question was, do we not have enough? Yes, it's not enough. And we need other variables potentially to answer bigger questions. But I think, you know, so if you go to page ninety-four and ninety-five, it is a comparison of arrests, and then it's, that is compared to the census population. So, you know, we have new census numbers coming out, um, and this may look different. But as researchers, sometimes what we're working with is that data that we have available at that time. Um, and we can, we can say there, there looks to be some disproportionality within a very large caveat. Um, and with, with saying, you know, we can't draw any inferences or come to any causal conclusions. But it doesn't mean that we don't kind of look and see, you know, is there something that we might wanna learn more about or examine more deeply? So given all the limitations and, and some of the challenges in understanding this, my feeling, you know, as a, as a researcher is, is not to say, well, then we can't examine it at all because it's not perfect. This is a starting point. This is one part of the report, uh, and it's, you know, our recommendation after trying to glean some more information, that much more information is needed. So I think that this just kind of hammers that home as well. So if you wanna examine a little more closely, those are the, the pages that you can look at.
Counselor Peak?
I think I know the answer to this already, but I'm just gonna ask it in a public forum in hopes that it, if you're talking about proportionality and there's the thought that a large number of out-of-town folks are skewing the results relative to East Hampton's population, then wouldn't simply filtering out those stops or arrests where the individual wasn't, like, had an address that wasn't associated with the East Hampton address, wouldn't that give you a sense of the proportionality?
Yeah, um, but we can't, we, there's, right now, there was no way for us to examine that data. So.
Okay, so the issue is about, um, the issues about whether or not the data is, um, like, the, the, the data isn't in a format where you can filter and select and cross-tab like that.
At least, at least that was available to the mayor pledge group.
Okay, well, that seems like a good thing to do next then. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Chief?
I just, I wanna piggyback on Professor Hendricks and, and try to help Mr. Hardy with his question. So, um, referring to page ninety-six is, is Professor Hendricks had stated. She write, or they write, the, the group writes, EPD citation data shows nine point one percent of traffic citations were issued to Hispanic Latino drivers, which is twice the rate, four point five percent of Hispanic Latino representation in local population. So she said, the group is saying that it's twice the rate, uh, which was to my point earlier when I spoke, that this is making the leap that we only stop East Hampton drivers. And again, I point out, and she points it out again, at the very, or they point, sorry, the group points it out, that it's not possible to draw any casual inferences, but the differences described above show disproportionality in traffic citations by race and ethnicity. But again, I go back to, you can't be disproportionate when the data is not, I don't, I don't say accurate, but it's, it's, it's making the leap that we're only stopping East Hampton drivers. So I hope that kind of answers your question, Mr. Hardy. That was, and that's what I was trying to point out earlier, and I think Tom Peak's spot on. If we can filter out, um, non, um, East Hampton drivers that, you know, were cited, that would be definitely helpful, uh, at least with regard to this particular topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Counselor Peak, you're right. Your hand is still up. You wanna ask something again, or?
Nope, just forgot to
Okay, no, okay, that's fine. Counselor Rothschild?
I guess it would depend what, what research question we're trying to ask, but it, it feels like screening out people that aren't East Hampton residents. I mean, wouldn't it still be problematic if, like, people of color driving through East Hampton were pulled over disproportionately to other drivers driving through? I, you know, so, um, I don't know. So I guess this is the question we're trying to ask, but I don't think screening out residents is the way we wanna go. Cuz I think the question is, and is, does it happen in our town like it happens in towns across the country? Where people of color are pulled over more than white people, like, is, um, not because necessarily people are intentionally trying to do that, but it's just a symptom of longstanding racial relations and bias in our country. So I'm not saying that that is the case in East Hampton, but I'm just saying we don't wanna screen out people who don't live here because I wouldn't feel comfortable with any person of color driving through East Hampton and getting pulled over either. Even if they don't live here.
I think that's why it's, it's so important, the recommendation from the committee, uh, from the group and probably from the committee is to get better data that we can analyze, analyze that situations and, and figure it out if, if we're doing that kinda stuff, if we're, if we're not doing it. So I think that's, that's really important to, to do and look like we're in, uh, in, um, in a hole with the, with the, with the data, look like we are lack. We have a lot of, a lot of information with the data and it should be good to get a better data system. Probably not just here, probably at the state level. Uh, every single town, we should have a better data that we can compare those numbers. Uh, Control Peak?
Thank you. Uh, my point was simply that for you to figure out these things, you need some sort of denominator, you know? And in my seven years working with state and federal and local data, I've never seen a data set that shows like the actual, um, the, 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 like, who, here's the demographics of people who drive through East Hampton on an average day, like, to make some, yeah, and, and, and my point was not that we should not examine the experience of people who are from out of town who come through, but just that, like, when you look at these things, it's rare that there's like a single statistic that tells the whole story. But we do know what people live in East Hampton, and if it turned out that most of the people who were stopped by the police were in fact East Hampton residents, then the concern that the chief and Counselor Zaret had expressed about, you know, the fact that this is sort of not exactly the same universe, that could be fixed to, to tell one part of the story. But just, I, I hear, the second I said that, I suddenly realized how that could potentially come off. So just to respond to what Counselor Rothschild said, like, I'm, I'm in no way suggesting that we don't examine the experience of people who are from out of town, simply that if we were able to look at the experience of East Hampton residents, you would have a numerator and denominator that are both known entities. Whereas like, if we look at the population of Holyoke, we know what the overall population of Holyoke is, but there's no data on which Holyoke residents travel to East Hampton regularly. And whether that demographically looks different than the overall population of, of Holyoke. We have no idea what the share of Southampton residents visiting East Hampton do as, as relate, like, how that relates to the share of, of, of Holyoke residents. And so it's, it's always gonna, you know, you can get probably better data, and I'd love to be part of that cuz this is what I do for my day job. But like, you're, the problem that you're always gonna run into is that there's certain things that there's just nobody keeping track of it, and you're, what exactly your commuter shed looks like is one of them. So at some point, you just have to eyeball it and say, does this look good to me? Does this look a little concerning? And, and you try and figure out where you can, where things might, um, where, where you might be able to actually get like a solid baseline just to, to analyze. So that, that was, I just wanted to clarify that. That's, that was my only point.
Thank you. Counselor Rothschild?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I just, I think that, you know, at the end of the day, we, we all want better data. So, so that we can not make assumptions that, that are unfair to, to anyone. So, um, whether or not, you know, whatever, wherever, you know, we're sitting in our experience of this, I think we can all agree we want better data. So hopefully that, at the end of the day, that's what will come out of this, that there will be clear and transparent data collection and engagement, ongoing engagement with the community so that, um, we can, you know, things, things won't be misinterpreted. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, I saw you hand before. I don't know if you wanna make a comment?
No, no, I was just gonna say almost exactly what Tom said. I'm not, I wasn't saying take the experience away from out of, uh, city drivers. I was saying, try to establish a baseline, and maybe that's where we start with a baseline is just extrapolating that data. That was all. I'm not saying that we're discounting anybody's experience driving through East Hampton. Uh, and the other thing I would offer is, uh, I think as we all know, we're getting, um, a significant amount of out-of-state drivers in East Hampton now too. So that too, um, would be a factor. So not necessarily just our neighbors, right? But it's, I think we did need more data collection and, and we needed a baseline so we can actually compare the data collection accurately.
Thank you. Uh, Hardy?
So I think the one thing that seems like everyone is on board with is we need more data and we need better data. So about money, um, is that, is, I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to talk about either systems or, you know, something that is gonna, you know, get us to the level of accuracy that everyone wants and needs to be able to, you know, not necessarily make assumptions, but draw, you know, intelligent, you know, lines between dots if, if, if those connections are there. So, um, is that something that is gonna get discussed? Or is that, I mean, are we, are we hamstrung in terms of that, or is, do we have the systems and things in place to be able to do it? Or is it something that needs improvement?
Chief, do you wanna answer?
Well, to which part? To the, to the money or the, uh, the system?
The system.
That's good. That's, thank you for that. Um, so the system that we have is pretty antiquated. It's used universally through the, through the entire state. Um, almost every single police department in the Commonwealth uses the system. It's called IMC. So it does, um, it does create, can't, like, I'll call them canned reports, where we can, like, kind of what we did, um, here, where, where you see on page ninety-six and ninety-seven. So there's canned reports that we can go back, um, and pull from the citations, uh, and from the arrests and, and, uh, incident reports. Um, but it's not user-friendly. It's very, very difficult. And we're police officers. We're not statisticians. Uh, we're not, we're not professionals at extrapolating this information from the system. The downside of the system is it's very difficult to maneuver. The upside of the system is that every police department is connected with each other for information sharing uh, and, uh, intelligence for investigations. So I know Boston PD, they're currently trying out a different system, uh, what, like a web-based system. But I think we're gonna be hard-pressed, um, to come up with a system until a state, um, does, rolls out a system unilaterally for all the police departments in all of the Commonwealth. And we are working on, on different things within this system, um, that I actually, if Detective Rogowski's on, I'd rather him speak to because he's a resident expert, although he's a detective and a police officer, not a statistician, but he's got the best handle on this system. So Rick, if you're still on, I'd like you to at least talk about, uh, what we've done, um, by way of, flagging motorists now, if they're not the owner-operator, and then the, um, the new tab that you create, that you're in the middle of creating, that would be helpful, I think. If you could speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, but before he talk, I wanna talk about the money. It's, it's a huge possibility that we have to spend money in, in a better system. But if that system provide us better informa- better information and better data, I'm pretty sure the mayor and this, the Consulor are more than happy to get that to keep our, our, um, city safer and fair. Um, I don't know if that answered your question, but I'm pretty sure I did. Um, now he can go. If he's around, I don't see him anywhere.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Um, so when, when we started looking at this and, and trying to get more data, the, the chief sent me on a deep dive and, and trying to figure out how to do this. So one of the things we did right away was created a special studies that would require certain questions to be answered prior to being able to close the call for traffic stops. Um, in my deep dive yesterday, I was made aware of a different part of the system that once we activate it and get everybody on board, can track race data through, um, every motor vehicle stop and/or citation, because not all motor vehicle stops result in a citation, whether it's a fine or written warning. So we should be going live with that within the next day or two, hopefully. And there is a way to extract more information from our system, but it's, to the chief's point, it's antiquated and very difficult, and we would have to hire someone to do that. And so that's where we're at.
Thank you. Myra?
Well, I just, good evening. I don't have a particular comment, um, other than, you know, it's obvious that the need for data sets and the, the data sets that were given to the, to the working group were, were lacking. But I was just wondering about the format of the meeting. Um, is it for counselors? Is it public speak? I, I don't, I just wanna know, are, are we ready for public speak? Are members of the public?
No, no, no.
You know, in this conversation?
And, and this meeting, everybody's public, except the three Consulors. I just wanna let people talk and, um, some people make some questions. And, uh, I just was using, and I tried to keep using Nicole for answering some of the questions. And, uh, if, uh, something is related to, to the police department that I think the, the police chief could answer something for our notes and everything, I will let him to do, to do so. That, that's why I'm trying to be kind of flexible with that.
No, I understand the flexible format. I was just wondering, is it, is it time?
No, no, no. It is, yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, that's all. I'm just clarifying. I'm sure you have plenty more hands.
Perfect. Gabby?
Um, hi, uh, my name is Gabby and I live in Precinct Two. Um, so I'm here, I, you know, like the rest of us is to talk more about the need for data sharing and transparency by So I'm here I you know like the rest of us is to talk more about the need for data sharing and transparency by specifically discussing an interaction that ACHIN experienced in trying to obtain public records from the East Hampton Police Department. So on December twentieth, ACHIN requested salary and internal affairs data from the EPD and after months of being ignored and having to file multiple appeals with the state ACHIN proceeded to hire an attorney to get this information. And it was only after we hired an attorney that the department through their own attorney agreed to provide us with the public information we requested. We received these files on April fourteenth even though we originally requested them on December twentieth. And I would also like to note that the files that we're trying to obtain from the EPD is information that is readily made available in other communities like Northampton, Amherst, and Worcester. And our attorney explained the importance of creating an environment where data sharing and data transparency is a norm rather than an exception. And specifically they note in a letter that was sent to both Chief Alberti and their attorney. They state, Dear Attorney Lucina, thank you for your recent response to the modified public records request made by my client and he is not enough to the East Hampton Police Department. ACHIN is pleased to receive his public records. As you know, ACHIN volunteered to simplify the request to reduce the burden on the East Hampton Police Department. ACHIN did not however agree to pay the fee that must be waived due to the department's failure to provide a timely response. ACHIN initially requested public records via email on December twentieth, twenty twenty. Their email met the requirements of a public records request as outlined in the law. The supervisor of public records determined that this email constituted public records request. The department failed to respond within ten business days. The department's argument that did not perceive the email as a public request does not affect the department's obligation to comply with the law by waiving the fee. When we spoke on the phone on March thirty first, you stated that the town could provide documents in response to the revised request without charging a fee. My clients could have insisted on pursuing their original requests for documents but instead modify the request to ask for the data that was easily retrievable from a computer system. By simplifying the request, ACHIN reduced the value of the department's response time from one thousand seven hundred seventy five dollars to a hundred fifty dollars. A one thousand six hundred twenty five dollar discount. The department has no right to seek the hundred fifty dollars. And as an aside, some of the data requested by ACHIN salary information and the results of internal affairs investigations is information that the department should consider publicizing yearly as other police departments in Massachusetts do. This promotes transparency and accountability. It also reduces the need of individual or community groups like ACHIN to make public records requests. The department should want the public to see the data about their internal investigations. In most police departments, it is rare for investigation of a civilian complaint to be sustained or to result in discipline. If the data shows that the East Hampton Police Department is willing to sustain complaints against their officers and take disciplinary action. These statistics put the department in a relatively good light. However, ACHIN does not owe and therefore will not pay a fee for this public records request. Sincerely, Howard Friedman. And I think what this letter also shows is that there has to be a willingness a willingness from the department to also share data. And it took us almost five months to get data that should that is public data that should be publicly readily made available by the police department. So I think that's also something that we also as a community should discuss is that not only transparency and data is a lack of data that the public has access to and why it's beneficial as a community for us to have access to this data. Thank you.
Liz?
Would it be possible counselor to let Jen Markey go before me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Jen?
Hi there. So my name is Jen Markey. I live at forty five Ridgewood Terrace in East Hampton. I prior to the pandemic twisting and turning our all our lives around worked with database systems in helping design them and helping work with a very old system that like wasn't getting a lot of customer service. So I definitely feel that feeling of wanting to get information out of a system that is not designed to do so easily. I do think that it's kind of imperative to do so even if it's hard because this information is really important and and any person in any line of work can tell you that data just really helps inform how things are done to improve things. So with that as an aside, I wanted to really briefly talk about you know my own experience trying to access data that is made publicly available by the EPD and then also talk a little bit about you know how to approach collecting more data and better data so firstly, I just wanted to say I have some concerns about even the data that's already being made available to the public specifically East Hampton PD has a kind of resource library of documents that they share and they publish their call logs daily although it looks like they're several weeks behind on that right now. I'm not sure if the system is just kind of a pain to work with but just something to keep in mind because I was trying to look up a a call recently and I I wasn't able to because I think the last one that was published was in like mid-April. So the call logs and then the weekly arrest logs which as is noted in the report and I think by the you know police representatives on this call the data that is available on those is pretty narrow but I was trying to get a sense at the time of kind of you know what locations were frequently receiving calls in East Hampton. Right now, a lot actually all of the information is available only as PDFs which people who have worked with data might be groaning right now because it is it's a a lot of work to take information that's available as a PDF and transfer it over into a CSV or an Excel spreadsheet something that can be used to work with data to see trends rather than just look up an individual incident. So I definitely want to recommend in this you know forum that information when it is made publicly available that those data sets be be presented as CSVs or Excel spreadsheets something that is easier for the public to use easier for civilian data analysts to use. It's just you know it's a a good practice in general while we're rethinking our our data collection and analysis. Okay, so with that aside, I do want to also note that there has been prior to these meetings oftentimes cases where individuals will ask questions or groups like ACHIN will make recommendations or ask questions and get a response oftentimes from police department or city employees that kind of implies like you know actually this question isn't really relevant because of this information about you know how East Hampton works and and we know how this works so don't worry about it. And I really want to point out how that that type of interaction really speaks to the issue that's presented in the report which is an issue of there being a disconnect between what's known and understood on the internal city level and in the public sphere. When someone wants to understand better you know the like racial or gender makeup of people stopped that's not necessarily something that is an attack and as is represented by the several different recommendations in this report it's information that lots of police departments have been asked before and have worked to make publicly available so that when people have concerns they can actually like meet their need for information you know themselves rather than relying on something like an annual report which can be kind of narrow in its scope because obviously you can't represent everything about a city in a single annual report. I think that changing the culture towards a culture of transparency is central in how to get to a good place with city residents' understanding of how the city government functions for them. When we talk about data collection and data analysis that data we want our data the data that we're collecting to be good right? We want to ask the right questions. We want to collect information that will help us analyze trends over time but we have to keep in mind as we're designing these systems that it's going to be people who are using those systems and in order for a system of data collection to work the culture that it is produced by needs to be one that actually cares about that data and feels like it's important for that data to be true. So I just also want to point out as we're discussing this that when changes are made in data collection and analysis changes in culture also need to be made where you know leadership in the city really encourages people to do what you know for example Myra was talking about see asking questions and exploring you know potential you know issues as an exercise in how to improve not a personal attack or an attack on you know and a individual department or a you know a person. You know there have been in issues with collecting more data leading to people wanting to manipulate that data to make sure that they and their you know friends and colleagues look good like you know for example the issues that came up with CompStat in New York City. I just want to make sure that I am noting improved data collection and publication is absolutely essential but changes in culture and a real push to make sure everyone is enthusiastically committed to collecting that data is just as important because that's what will ultimately allow people to have true transparency and not just the facade of transparency. Okay, I did oh I had one other note which was just as more data is being collected and ideally made public you know I am a an interested individual I'd rather not wait you know several months or have to hire a lawyer to get information beyond just what's published on the the PD's website. You know I that would be unideal for me obviously just as an individual citizen so making that information more public I would also just recommend that the the EPD also look into publishing some glossaries of terms used because certainly within a department you need to have a shorthand as you're you know taking dispatch calls and things like that but you know I was you know when I look at the call logs and things like that sometimes it's hard for me to tell the difference between you know the notes on two calls whether or not they would be equivalent or if they are different the definitions of words that are being used is also really important so with publicizing data making sure to also publicize what the words and terms being used mean is a way to avoid what's the word? Miscommunications. Sorry, that was really long but I appreciate it.
We have to keep moving. Sorry. Yeah, Liz?
Hi, I'm Liz. I live in Ward Three and the statement I have prepared counselor actually I feel like loosely fits the topic. I wanted to speak on on a survey that was put in the mayor's pledge report.
No, we we don't have that in our agenda. We are
Right, so I'm thinking that maybe I will save it for the next hearing at the beginning of the meeting in the spirit of letting things move forward.
Sure.
Thanks.
Hardy, I saw your hand before a few times.
Oh yeah, sorry. I just I just wanted I'm I don't want to go off topic but people were talking about FOIA's and you know FOIA's with in respect to the EPD things like that. You know as someone who's a I don't know if everyone remembers but an avid FOIA person myself and someone who actually had to appeal to the Secretary of State's office to get records from the city of East Hampton I don't think that it's the system in general and when I say system I mean like the law and the you know it's it's very easy to make a law. It's very difficult to build a system that allows for compliance with that law and the FOIA system is not really designed to function well. It it you know as evidenced by how difficult it is to get information and it's not it's not always it it can be it can be malice but more often it's due to inefficiencies or inabilities to produce you know documents timely and in an easy way. The state effectively gives a mandate to municipalities that you must provide this data within this period of time with with no funding. It's an unfunded mandate with no funding with no ability to to help them get that to the citizens within the allotted timeframe. And I just I don't know. I mean, I don't know if everyone remembers but I I had a thing with with emails from the city and that was you know it was kind of rough and had to appeal and all that and the Secretary of State's office you know overruled the city and that that isn't because the city was doing something bad. It's just the system. It's not a good system and I think that I don't know. I think that we just we sort of have to work with the system we have and try to get as much data as we can in the best way possible but it's not it doesn't work. The system does not work well I guess is what I want to say. FOIA it's not just it's not just law enforcement. It's it's any department of the city when when you use and not just this city either. It's not an East Hampton problem. It's it's all municipalities. So I don't know if anyone wants to add anything to that but that's that's been my experience.
Thank you. Noah?
Hi, thank you. I think I would just like to add real quickly that I hear a lot of people talking about data collection and the need for more and the need for more workforce behind it and people doing it and I heard a couple officers recommend hiring another position to do that sort of work and I think I would just like to recommend and make sure that people are thinking about the concept of where that budget would be coming from and going to and how it seems to be it would be counterproductive to give that money to the police department to do data collection to provide data on themselves. So I just think that you know if the city is saying that there is potentially more money for more data collection because the data collection is so important that I don't believe that the police should be hired to do that. It should be going out to a third party that's impartial and will give valid data. That's all. I just wanted to make sure that people are remembering where the money's going.
Yeah, thank you. I just I just want to be clear. I I said that in the future it's a possibility that if we need new data program I bet that the mayor and the city council is gonna be on the same page to get that money. I'm not saying that we have money like to throw away for because we have extra money everywhere.
Of course.
I just wanna I just wanna be clear with that.
Yeah, I don't know. I understand.
Yeah. Louise? Louise?
Hi, I'm sorry. I having trouble with settings. My name's you can hear me?
Yes.
That's very sorry. The video is just not good. But um my name's Louise Jacob. I'm District Three and the what I wanted to talk about was it's almost a narrow point but it concerns me and it's under recommendation two so we're doing that today. It calls for subsection five which is basically publish and present a report on the department's restorative justice program. And this on the restor- department's restorative justice yes an EPD program and it concerns me. First because there's been a big question of SROs in the schools but there are also I've discovered recently examples in Western Mass of restorative justice within schools. There's been some grant money. I don't know if it's still there available for it and they've all been examples.
Louise, I'm sorry. I have to interrupt you because we're talking now about the data collection and about the second recommendation from the report and if you can keep your your comments about that I will appreciate it.
I don't speak. I don't speak, that, okay, okay, my, okay, this was part, it's not specifically data collection. I will be happy to withdraw for later, but it, there were several points and it was under recommendation two, so I'm not actually sure.
Because to, we, the first meeting was, uh, open, basically to open to, uh, for the recommendation number one, and today we are, um, kind of moved to recommendation three, but we're still talking about recommendation two, that basically is about the data collection in our, in our police department.
Okay, I thought this, uh, the mayor's report, I thought this was one part of, I will defer, absolutely. I'm just saying that it was under recommend, it was point five under recommendation, um, two or three, now I'm losing my place, but that was why I was trying to. Okay, if it doesn't fit in right now, I'm not sure when it does, but definitely move on.
Thank you. I saw someone else's hand that I don't see anymore. Nicole?
Omar, just for the record, I, I think there's some confusion. It is in recommendation two, what she's referring to.
Okay.
It's about, uh, recommending a series of reports, um, that we, we considered as part of recommendation two.
Okay.
So just let me clarify, um, the department has, uh, begun working with a regional, um, restorative justice practice, and so the, the recommendation is about, um, making that information, uh, public.
Okay. Louis, are you still there? You want to talk?
Um, okay, I mean, I'll try to talk briefly because it don't fit in, but, and that was interesting, Nicole, my part wasn't, thank you, my part wasn't, um, the data that's been collection, collected, my part was, the concern a lot of us have about, or certain numbers, members of the public, and I'm one, have about restorative justice, that can be a really good program, and I've known people who've said it's very good, but to have it run by the EPD under the auspices of the EPD, because that involves a kind of order of crime context, there's, it's, um, how shall I put it, it's it's coercive, it's coercive when it comes as an order, um, and part of the reason concerns me is that it would be lovely if our, schools could apply, do what Turner's Fall has done, what O'Leary, I've got it written down, here has done, there are examples of non, there are examples of restorative justice, especially in high schools, that are only run by trained staff, and it seems that, and they've been very successful, and there's some grant money actually available, or was until recently within Western Mass, so, I was just concerned that this would do that. And the second thing that, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to move on and skip now, but, um, the second thing I'd like to point out is that there has been a lot of intimidation coming out of EPD lately. And when you're thinking about whether like, where, what they do get involved, and this isn't data, but what they do and what they don't. Sorry?
I don't know, it wasn't me.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm concerned about the intimidation that seems to be happening again, the same as, uh, including an incident last night, the same as happened several years ago. After the EHS incident to a point, I wasn't here, I've just discovered quite recently, one family left town under it. So these are getting a
Button I'm supposed to push?
Yeah. Secondarily, first is restorative justice, and second, I'm doubly concerned about restorative justice because I am one of those people who right now, just speaking as a citizen, would not dare to call the police, unless there was somebody with a gun outside.
I'm sorry, Louise, but, uh, I think that will be a public speak time, because that's not related to the report and, um, I'm, I'm sorry, but you are more than welcome to, to come to the next meeting and, and make any comments about that in public speak time.
Okay, fine, I might, I might write you, Omar, and just ask the distinction between public speak I, I'm definitely confused and I yield the floor.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear again with everybody, what, what we're trying to do now is just talk about just the report. And I let everybody to talk, but I please stay with the report. If you want to talk about something related to the police department or anything else related to the public safety or anything else, you're more than welcome to come to our meeting and it's public speak time, you can, uh, make any comment, same with the, uh, full city council. We have a public speak time there and you're more than welcome to come and, and, uh, give us a statement about whatever you want. Jean?
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. I really want to speak to something in recommendation three, however, given this conversation about data, police data, I would like some clarification about this data collection. So are we just talking about the people who are traveling in town, being stalked, is that part of the data? And I'm curious to know how the data around what Louise was referring to about, around police intimidation. So is that part of the data that is collected? I'm just curious to know about that, since we're talking about data and, you know, is it only people in cars that are, you know, part of this data? So, and I yield the floor, I would like to talk about recommendation three though.
Thank you, Jean.
When we get, when we get there.
I, I, I hope we get there soon. Thank you. Nicole, do you want to make a quick statement or comment about that?
The recommendations are broad and they speak to, uh, a host of data points, and I would probably just refer you back to, it's bullet point number three. So we're, the work group is recommending collecting demographic data on all calls for service and officer-initiated contacts. That includes interactions without a dispatch call for service, so, uh, and at a minimum capturing the race, ethnicity, genders, and reason for contact, so we're not, you know, one of the things that you didn't see, um, because it was not, uh, we, we didn't have the data, was traffic stops. We're talking tonight about citations and arrests because that was, um, what was available. But ideally, we would look at a whole host of dimensions around police public contacts, um, and that would include, examining, you know, traffic stops, uh, and, and then we could see what percentage of those, you know, in terms of leading to a citation, we would, we would look at that data, so really, um, I would also refer back to something that, um, resident, you know, Jen Markey mentioned, and, and that is that part of this report is recommending that the community be brought in and invited in to defining what are the important data points that this community would like to examine on a regular basis, so I'm not coming, or this report is not coming to any foregone conclusion. It's saying, you know, make space and room for the community to be part of defining what, what these, um, data points should look like.
Thank you, Nicole. I just want to ask, first, I'm gonna let, uh, Chief and then Myra, and please be brief, because I want to move to the, the recommendation.
Now, so I just wanted to point out with C4RJ, it is a program that, uh, it's in its infancy with us. And if anybody has any questions regarding that and don't want to talk to the police, I would, uh, suggest call, uh, the Northwestern District Attorney's Office and talk to ADA Becky Michaels, who is a liaison for that program. And the, the, all of those, um, referrals that we make, and we make referrals to the community circle in the restorative justice, so after the, we make the referrals, we're out of it, and those reports, uh, will be forthcoming, um, in public. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is with regards to the daily logs, as somebody mentioned earlier, again, I have police officers doing this work. So they're also answering calls and they're also serving the community in multiple capacities. So do we get behind on the daily logs? Absolutely, but we're police officers, we have, you know, we're policing first. So, you know, something like that might be an area to look at, um, to help us out, as well as, uh, even the public record. A daunting task, if anybody knows anything about public records, but that's it.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, so, uh, I just, my, my comment is related to also the recommendation and some turns, concerns about, um, their sort of justice program and how data points on that being collected are also of concern. I had the opportunity to speak, to hear the testimony from Chief Casper in Northampton, but believe initiated, um, this regional participation in the restorative justice program, which the EPD, I believe, is a, a part of that. And to my, I just had, I, I feel like data would actually drive, drive that as I believe it's officer-initiated, who gets, who is, who is recommended for the restorative justice program and data about the arrest and who is, okay, from what I understood from her is Chief Casper, is that those who are arrested cannot be part of the restorative justice program. It has to be in, it, it has to be prior to the point of arrest, so a, uh, data and data points could show who is being put forth, are there trends, um, of who is being recommended for the restorative justice program, um, in, in lieu of penalty or jail time or whatever it is, and are there any trends of specific people who are referred to that route? So I would feel like it's another, a data point that needs to be collected, examined, especially if it's in its infancy, starting off with data of, of whom is being recommended in terms of, um, prior to arrest, are people not being arrested or are people being arrested? Um, and is, or is that demographically, um, is there a demographic trend there? So I just wanted to bring that out, and I did have the, the opportunity to listen to that testimony about the restorative justice program, and it brought up a lot of questions in my mind in terms of it being, um, potentially skewed or, um, give offered to specific groups and not others.
Counselor Gomez, one quick clarification, it's pre-arrangement, so people can go into restorative justice after they're arrested and or summoned, it's pre-arrangement.
Thank you, thank you, Myra.
Gomez, I would like a chance to speak. Martin Fedor.
No, excuse me, excuse me, just one second. I will let you talk about the data if that's what you want to talk, and please be brief.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Number one, we're going to talk about the data, but number two, when is there an opportunity to, uh, speak a little bit more than just about the data? Is that coming up in the next 10 or 15 minutes? Or is that another meeting? Because I came into this late.
Excuse me, can you, um, you only have the letter M and I'm, I'm the clerk of this committee, so I need to write your full name down, can you please tell me your full name?
Martin Fedor, F as in Frank, E as in Edward, D O R.
Okay, great.
So Mr. Fedor.
Correctly.
So Mr. Fedor, uh, first, when we start the meeting, we start with the public speak time, and that's when, uh, people are allowed to talk for whatever they want. This is not related to, uh, something that we have on the agenda. Now, as part of the agenda, that we're talking about the report and, uh, we are having a multiple meetings. The first meeting was about the first recommendation, and now we're talking about the second and the recommendation, we still have the second recommendation from the, uh, Mayor's Police Group Report. I'm just gonna let people to talk about that, this is not a public hearing, but I'm being flexible to listen to people about what they think about, if they have any other type of recommendation about this report, so, uh, that's where we are now, and that's what we're gonna let you to speak, at least for one minute, because we have to move on to the third recommendation, and, uh, please ask you to please be, uh, be brief.
How many more recommendations do we have, Counselor Gomez?
We have, we have six.
Six, okay, I understand your concern, I will be brief.
Thank you.
When I took statistics class in college, one of the first points that my professor told me when she was teaching my class, and I quote, "Figures don't lie, but liars can figure." So I would like everybody to think about that for a minute. I came into this when the, uh, instructor was speaking earlier, I think she's a professor, I don't know her name, but, uh, she was speaking. She gave us a lot of statistics. So, as we all know, those can be manipulated to fit the agenda. I'm very concerned, as a longtime East Hampton resident, you wouldn't believe the feedback I'm hearing about what's going on in our town against the police department. To my knowledge, the city of East Hampton has, has an unblemished record in policing, okay? So after all these years, we're all from immigrants, Counselor Gomez, we all are immigrant background, I happen to be Polish. Right? We all moved here many years, we've lived happily, we've never had the kind of problems we're having now all of a sudden. When we have these folks that want to make issues out of, out of certain things, I understand your concern, and I don't know what it's like to grow, grow up not as a, as a Polish person. So I do understand that, but I have to remind you that the Polish people were not always respected back in the day, and neither were the French, neither were the Irish. So every generation or nationality, I'm sorry, excuse me, seems to have had issues, but we've all learned to coexist. All of a sudden now, this committee is developed to address a problem that may not even be there. I have to ask this, and it's a thought question. Why, all of a sudden, what is the motive behind grilling the police department and making an issue of policing in our town? Is it because out of retaliation? Is it because when we had?
Mr. Fedor, I, I, Mr. Fedor, I have to stop you because we, again, we are, you're not talking about the data, you're talking about perceptions.
It's valid.
No, no, in this, no, at this time, because we're not talking about perception now, we're talking about the data. And we're talking about, uh, uh, we're talking about what, what kind of data we need to be more transparent or more accountable in our community.
There's not enough data.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but you have to stop. I'm sorry, but I have to stop. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry you have to stop. I I hear you. I hear your story. And you know what? It's it's another place and time to talk about that. And now we are talking about the data and we're gonna keep it about the data. Just when I keep move on, we're gonna move to recommendation three. And if Nicole can please give us a brief report from recommendation three, I will appreciate that. Are you still here, Nicole?
I am here.
Thank you.
Sure, again, time is, I know, limited, so I'll try to really make this quick. The third recommendation is pretty straightforward. It's around strengthening oversight. And we drew quite a bit from a lot of the existing policing literature, including from, you know, the cops office, the police executive research forum. And we really want to emphasize the need to engage a core group of residents to examine, study and recommend an external oversight framework or mechanism. There are were two sub recommendations that came from that. One was to explore a paid position in local government to support the Community Relations Committee, such as Human Relations Administrator or Intake Worker to help manage complaints that would work in the, you know, with the CRC. There are other mechanisms and we're not specifically endorsing one. We're just saying that these, these were the recommendations that came from the work group. And that that is to engage folks in the community to make a decision about some kind of external oversight. Police Advisory Review Boards are another way that this can happen. And I would just give an example in in Pittsfield. They have such a format. They have a police advisory review board of citizens. They also have a Community Relations Committee. We recommend creating an alternative, alternative avenue for filing complaints for those community members who do not wish to file a complaint with the police department. And the report cites several examples of this. One Urbana, Illinois. These are best practices that many departments across the country have implemented. The last few ensure that the complaint process is clear, easy to access and transparent. And that, you know, any material should be bilingual. And the the sort of guidelines for submitting a complaint must be kind of readily available on on one page. Take complaints in person and writing online and through third party advocates. And then the last recommendation is from the work group is make police disciplinary records public.
Thank you. Any consult have any question about this to Nicole? No? Anyone from the public want to comment about this? Jean?
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. I want to speak to to number three about the oversight of the of the police department. And I want to also thank Carolyn for taking such good notes the other night because I'm gonna really come off of her notes. Since my memory is this long these days. So I just want to say that I do agree with the recommendation with the third recommendation that we need to strengthen community oversight of the police and create a clear and easy and transparent complaint process. I, at this point, though, I don't see an existing well-resourced, appropriate, skilled place or group that we could just, that can take this on right now. The report point, the mayor's report report re took points to the Community Relations Committee and which Nicole just spoke about. So as a possible, as the community, our Community Relations Committee is being a possible body to provide an oversight. However, as someone who has been watching the CRC develop development from its inception back in twenty seventeen, after the racist incident at the incident at the high school, I have been sort of keeping an eye on them and it's in pitiful shape. But so as we move on, though, the other night, we had, or they had Derek Dean from the Department of Justice who came in. He is from the Department of Justice and he supports the Community Relations Commission across. I guess he's it's federal or but he's he was working with our Community Relations Committee. Let's see now, where am I? In in that talk, he outlined that there are different functions of the CRC, which include those that have an investigative investigative Tory investigative function. The CRC that the CRCs that do investigate need skills that start skills. I'm sorry, staff and appropriate budget. He suggests that the East Hampton CRC was a year or two away from being able to take on this kind of function. The group itself has not decided on how well prioritize or how how it will prioritize its work, nor if they will decide to take on this function. So a pitfall of the CRC that Mr. Dean identified is as an ad hoc demand. As ad hoc demands are made to the CRC without the resources and author authority to actually be able to fulfill them made made by electric official, elected officials who then move on to other issues and don't do anything. So they have no power, which has been part of what's been going on with our CRC. They've had, you know, they've had no real direction. They've had no power. So it's been kind of a defunct group. But I want to say I I do believe to that I see in the report that what Nicole was talking about too. The idea of forming an ad hoc group to look at the various existing options and explore others to make a thoughtful recommendation about how to develop an oversight plan. Without without, well, then, that committee must be made up. And this is a very, very relevant point, which I think was not brought up when the CRC was first formed. That committee must be made up of a diverse range in our community members and those most impacted by policing. Maybe provided, maybe, maybe provided the necessary staff funding and the resources required. I know I'm feeling, I'm a little choppy here because I'm trying to read this thing. But anyway, that's, I mean, I think the CRC is a good place to start, but we need a lot of work there. And I think working with the Department of Justice and this Derek Dean would be a great place if that's something that that the city decides to do. I think that's about what I had to say, but you know, and listening to all this, I did want to end up with one last thing, Omar, and then I will hush. Something that I read in recommendation two. It's a quote by, oh darn it, now I can't find it. Sorry. Oh, no, here it is. It's a quote from a sociologist axis, Alex S. Vital from recommendation number two. And what he said is accountability must be based on great openness and transparency. So I think we really need to be open. The police department needs to be open. The community needs to be open, but we need to be open and open hearted and looking at what we need to do to combat what we've got going on in the country as well as right here in our own little town. Even though we might not be stopping police people of color on the street, there's a lot of intimidation that goes on with people of color in other ways. So I yield my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, just I'm gonna try to be brief, Counselor. But I'll start with alternatives to filing police complaint. We already have those website, CRC, one of the things we set up with the CRC. So people could go to the CRC and file a complete complaint if they didn't feel comfortable coming to the police station. Certainly City Hall, phone, email, in person, our website, even we even have had complaints over social media. And they are public records. That's mandated by law. And in fact, the, I'm gonna get into the post in a second, but not only the public, not only the public records now, the reform bill has done away with any sort of all agreements in regards to complaints and internal investigations. The intimidation is a pretty bold charge, so I would suggest if people are accusing the police department of any sort of intimidation, file a complaint or go to the CRC with your complaint. Because that's, that was thrown out quite a bit tonight and it's a pretty bold charge. And if if there are actual complaints about police will absolutely positively thoroughly investigate them. So now I'll get into basic local, basically, what I would just describe as local duplication of police oversight. Within the new reform bill, Post Commission is set up. And I'll just go very briefly through what that commission is. This in the diversity and the knowledge that's on this Post Commission, there isn't one community in the Commonwealth, I don't think, that could surpass this. So and I was just gonna run real quick. There's a justice, a governor appointees, a justice chief when they mentioned Pittsfield PD. Chief Wynn sits on the Post Commission now, licensed social worker, a chair of a policy group, detective from Boston PD, trial attorney that specializes in civil rights discrimination, police misconduct cases, a licensed psychologist, an ordained senior chaplain and a partner at a Boston law firm investigating federal and state agencies. That's the makeup of the commission. So the commission's mandate now to us is, and I'll go through these briefly, Counselor. And the reason I want to just point this out is local duplication of what the state has just stood up would would be a far cry from from what the state can actually do. So if I get a complaint in under the law now, I've got forty eight hours to get that complaint to this Post Commission and they'll take the complaint to them. And the complaint, you know, it's going to be there for and it's gonna have names, date of incidents, description, you know, everything that happened. So we're we're required to send that. Once we do our investigative report, we're required to send that to the post. And then once we come up with a disposition, we have to send that to the post, all to be reviewed by by the Post Commission. The Post Commission, after they they review it, will they also have the ability to commit and order all of our records as well and all of our internal affairs complaints? And I'll point out too that I have to submit by September thirtieth. I have to submit to the Post Commission every single internal affairs reports on any of our, any and all of our officers. In addition to if I take one in tonight or today or tomorrow, we have to submit all of our reports historically to them for review. So then they'll review these, that 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 group that I just talked about, that very diverse group that I just talked about. They'll review these reports and complaints and they will then determine whether or not the actions that the administration took were sufficient to them or not. And they have the ability to certify, decertify police officers, which means they'll be unemployed. They won't be certified. They won't be able to work anywhere in the United States. So I would just caution that duplication of what I just explained, I think would be non beneficial to the city since the state's already standing it up. I hope I was brief.
Thank you, Chief. Kate?
Hi, everybody. Kate Collins. Carol of East Hampton. And I'll try to be brief as well as in in respect to everybody else's time. I just got distracted because I realized I have an interesting background right now, but I didn't realize it. So that's my document. You know, in in terms of recommendation three and talking about oversight, there's just a couple of things that I want to mention and and it's been, it's been brought up in the past and stressed that currently the Community Relations Commission doesn't have any power to take any action. So if somebody were to bring complaints to the CRC, there isn't actually anything right now that they necessarily have the power to do. Then that may, that may change going forward, but right now, even the Community Relations Commission itself acknowledges that they don't have the power to actually do anything with complaints. And I would just like to say too that community inquiry is why there is now an online complaint form. Because when people, when community members started looking into how does one make a complaint against the police if one needs to, there wasn't any online option for that prior to next year and prior to the community bringing it to the city's attention. And I just want to say too, Professor Professor Hendrix has, you know, has been correlating data for this report. And you know, data correlation, of course, is crucial as I think we've discussed a few times here. But what I want to say is if we're talking about engaging a core group of residents to examine, study and recommend external oversight frameworks and mechanisms, my ask for the community is that that group of community members has a facilitator, a professional facilitator who's one one job and one compensated job is to make sure that conversations that these community members are having are respectful. And that if there is a diverse panel, if there are BIPOC members of the community, they're involved in that panel, that there is facilitation so that things don't get escalated. We all know that these are hot button issues. You know, we've heard, we've heard people in these meetings take deep offense to to what is perceived to be a critique of individual members of our police force when community members are coming forward and talking about the institution of policing as a whole and trying to make everybody in our community have a level of safety that is that is equal, that there is equity in that safety level. And people have shared personal experiences for this and it has been taken as a direct attack on 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 individual humans. So I think that any oversight body in this community needs to have professional facilitation to make sure that these conversations stay respectful and on point and not personal. And I just, I feel very deeply about that. And I think that, you know, this is a journey that the city is on and the community members in the city are on together. You know, in reading some of the surveys that were filled out in the mayor's report, there is commentary about, you know, about A Kind and about hating everything they stand for. When in effect, what they stand for is people in the community that is the community that the 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 institution of policing wants to serve and protect that have concerns. So that if there is a body in addition to the Community Relations Commission that is formed to assist with oversight or even, you know, if if the chief said there's a state, a diversity oversight board that they're they're forwarding things to currently, even if we have a central body that's going to evaluate community issues and and bring them forward, there needs to be professional facilitation involved with that and involved in the community conversations and involved in anything that's brought forth to the community to have a discussion so that people can come to a place of of airing their concerns without being targeted as a as a potential attack. And you know, in terms of, in terms of intimidation, just, just as a quick point, the the point of intimidation is that it's the appearance and threat of violence without performing violence so as to to avoid any possible accountability. So rather than just having a knee jerk reaction to that, I think that we need to talk about perception and we need to have professional assistance to do that. And I think that it, the board is formed, it needs to be a paid position.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate. Look like I wouldn't have anyone else, um, any coming from the counselors? Because I wanna do one. I, first, I, I wanna, I wanna say thank you for everybody who participated. I set up the rules really early, and I hope we keep it that way. I have to repeat again, this is, this is not us against them. This is, this is, this is a process. The, uh, they came from the mayor first. Came for, uh, for a major, create a group, and this group have attacks to do, and that group did it. Then the report came to the full city council, and the full city council sent it to Public Safety to get it more input and to get more, uh, information from the public and from the police department to set, uh, send a better recommendation to the, to the mayor, to do something that everybody can and feels safe in our community. That's the goal, and if it is that the goal, I'm in it, because that's my goal. I wanna, the, everybody to feel safe in my community, because yes, I didn't grow up here, but this is my community since fifteen years ago, when I decided to choose this community to be my community. And I love it as much as I love Puerto Rico. So I just wanna make that clear. Anything from the other two counselors? Counselor Derby?
Yeah, I can stop listening now, which is, you know, I appreciate everybody speaking, and I, and I think, you know, one of the takeaways for me that's good news is that, you know, we can agree that more data is better. And, and I think all of us are on the same page with that. And, and so I think as we can look towards finding ways to, to collect information so we can have more information, so we can guide our decisions in the future. And one of the things that didn't get mentioned that was in the report, and I think it's important, is the reporting of that data. You know, whether it comes back to public safety, or whether it gets, you know, presented to the mayor or to the city council, that's another step in the process, whether it's quarterly, um, and, but that, I think, also takes care of the transparency issue as well. And so, you know, I, I think that while we may have diverse opinions on, on, you know, the, the actual steps to get to the, to the end of this, I, I think it's important to remember that, you know, we, we do agree. You know, more data is better, and that's, and that's great. So I, I think we're, you know, that's, that's a positive takeaway for me. So, thank you.
That's it. That's great. Thank you, Counselor Derby. Counselor Rocha, I'm sorry, I'm taking notes.
I don't, I just, again, um, thank you, um, thank you, Councilor Gomez, for the format that you set out, and once again, everyone who showed up and talked, um, that, you know, we all, this is what makes the community. We're all different people. We have different perceptions, and being able to talk about it and move through it is, um, is, is positive. So I'm really happy that everyone showed up to share, and we are focusing on the police here, but data in general is good for any group, and it, it creates a continuous, like, continuous cycle of improvement. So, I, you know, I think any department should be regularly reporting their data and making policy decisions based on it. So, anyway, I think tonight was positive, and thank you again, Councilor Gomez, and everyone who showed up.
Uh, Chief?
Uh, one last thing, Counselor, I forgot to direct attention to. On our webpage, or the front page, or our homepage on our web, uh, website, there is a statistics button you can click on, and we've got an updated statistical analysis up there that might be interesting for the folks on this in the community at, at large. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. You guys, counselors wanna set up the next meeting now, or? I'll take a look before we adjourn?
Okay.
You guys wanna met June first, like typically with that, first Tuesday of the month?
Um.
That works for me.
Yep, that, that's work.
Let's do June first, uh, seven PM probably is good, so that we have more public participation. That work for both?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. So our next meeting is gonna be June first at seven PM. I encourage everybody to show up again, and we'll be really, um, open to listen to people. Lisa, I'm sorry, but we're gonna adjourn, and the meeting is over. But we're gonna allow you the opportunity to talk at the next meeting. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, uh, Counselor Derby?
Aye.
Counselor Rochelle?
Aye.
And I say aye. Everybody have a great night.
Take care. Thank you.
See ya.
Thank you. Bye.